And that is February the fourth. And we're sort of call to order and we'll begin with Councilmember Swain.
Swain here.
Love here.
Callahan here.
Rodriguez here.
Dennis here.
Fraser here.
McShan here.
Kuznowski here.
And Councilmember Gibson is out. His significant other is graduating tonight. So congratulations to Crystal. And that's why he's not here.
I'll make a motion to approve him.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
All righty. And Councilmember Dennis will be doing the Gibsonistic implication.
All right, thank you. Our Heavenly Father, I thank you for the continued opportunity to serve the people of the city of Elgin. Keep us always mindful that we are in this position to serve and not to be served. I'm grateful for the city staff and encourage them and keep them safe. I thank you for the interim leadership that we have. Help us all to work together as we seek to hire solid partners who'll share our vision for a place where people can live together and grow as cohesive community. Be with the Charter Committee that will commission here this evening. I'm thankful for those that have agreed to serve for this task. I pray this evening, as we work through our agenda and make decisions, we'll always put the people's interests above our own. Help us uphold what is moral and rational. Help us to be able to discuss and tackle the important things we need to and be efficient in handling those things. Give us the grace to come to the best possible and write solutions that would benefit those who serve. It's in Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas by the United Nations to lead Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We didn't, we didn't, no, we didn't vote. We sure did. I wasn't doing that in a hurry, was I? Mom, I apologize, let's back up. We didn't vote on on first and second, but we didn't actually vote. So we will begin with Love, Councilmember Love.
Love, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes?
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kuznowski, yes.
Swain, yes.
All righty, thank you for catching that. I'm moving along. Next, we have our public hearing. Under ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Elgin, Texas adopted in Chapter forty-six, Section forty-six-three, revised code of ordinances, city of Elgin, Texas, twenty thirteen, and making this amendment a part of the said zoning to wit to rezone C three, Highway Commercial District to I, General Industrial District A, portion of the land located on a parcel known by the Bastrop County Appraisal District as parcel one-five-three-three-six, the Corlin subdivision, lot three acres two-point-four-six-two-zero, and the portion of land located on a parcel known by the Bastrop County Appraisal District as parcel eight-seven-eight-seven-nine, Corlin subdivision, lot two acres two-point-zero-zero-zero, located on the west side of North Highway ninety-five and north of McGoney Lane, being more described in Exhibit A, and providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, that ends public hearing one. Public hearing two. Under an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Elgin, Texas, adopted in Chapter forty-six, Section forty-six dash three, revised code of ordinances, city of Elgin, Texas, twenty thirteen, and making this amendment a part of said zoning map to wit to rezone from I, General Industrial District to C two, General Commercial District, located on a parcel of land known by the Bastrop County Appraisal District as parcel eight-four-six-two-seven, Elgin Business Park, lot two acres zero-point-nine-nine-six, being described in Exhibit A, attached heretofore, and providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions. Any?
Anyone signed up?
No one has signed up, so we're moving along. End of that public hearing. Now we're open for public comment and please remember that speaker shall be, shall fill out a public comment form. You have three minutes and the speaker is limited to that time and when you hear the beep, you have to stop. No formal action can be taken by the city council or items not posted on the agenda. I don't have that anyone signed up? No one signed up. Moving along to the city manager's report.
Vote.
Yes, Mayor, in y'all's packets and we can talk about any of them in depth, but we have the Planning and Zoning Commission Quarterly Report, the Public Safety Advisory Committee Quarterly Report, Economic Development Corporation Board Quarterly Report, two different Parks Advisory Quarterly Reports. We're still playing catch-up from the last meeting that was postponed. And then we have expansion of County Line Road, which I do want to talk a little bit about. This is, the ISD and the city came to terms for a future expansion for County Line Road. This kind of touches Phase Two, which we're currently, the design is currently being done and we're expecting to go out to bid, but it also touches Phase Three, which will connect the two different portions. This, the ISD is donating that portion of right-of-way, which is pretty significant. It's about forty foot wide for the entire length of their property in front of Nightig Elementary, so that we can basically continue that same cross-section of the roadway, which you have at least two lanes in either direction with the median cut for left-turn lanes. Actually, the layout will allow, I believe, three lanes in the south direction and two lanes in the north direction. So again, sign move traffic along County Line Road where we have a lot of growth. And that's basically, we're going to execute that, just making you guys aware of ISD. They did something very similar with the high school property. Same thing in addition to the church over there, where we expanded that roadway. So this is just really getting everything pulled together. And then the last item is the CenterPoint Energy Transportation Service Rate. This was on the previous agenda. This is basically just our notification by state law from CenterPoint of what the new gas rates were going to be. There's not really an action to be taken by council, it's mostly a notification. So any other, any of those items y'all want to discuss in further?
Yeah, I'd like to ask about the County Line Road. So the rest of County Line Road, is that taken care of through agreements with the developers?
Yes, well, we have the GLO grant that is paying for the County Line Road, which is basically from two ninety to the southern property line of Nightig Elementary. So yes, we've collected funds from the developers that fall between that stretch or we've collected right-of-way that's been donated from different developments along that stretch. And that's mainly grant-funded. The city had a very small match portion, if you recall, that was set aside with some of the CO money. The other section, which will essentially connect from FM eleven hundred down to Nightig Elementary, that is the one that we're continuing to work with TechDOT. We are collecting funds for that portion of the road through agreements, but the overall project has not been funded by either TechDOT or the city for, to fill that gap basically along there. But yes, as developments occur there, the city has been in conversations either through PDDs that come here before council for those granted upon. The most recent one that'll come in front of you is for a potential multifamily there on the southeast corner, catty-corner from the church on that property there. They would also contribute into a future project that would need to occur there. Again, with the main focus being that that S-curve would essentially go away and you would have a T-intersection with FM eleven hundred straightened out there and the, what you already see is Raymond Johnson. That would be the intersection to County Line Road and that curvature would go away. But that is not a hundred percent funded project as Phase One has already been completed and Phase Two is funded.
And have we seen any movement with TechDOT on, on that?
There's been movement. Some of the delays are just we have so much development that's coming in on FM eleven hundred is making sure that they account for exactly how much right-of-way they need and what they're trying to get from developers as well. City's actively part of those discussions, but you do have the bus barn that you guys heard from the ISD. You have Triada, the ETJ mud that has the major arterial, which is basically the sister street of County Line Road going in north-south. It'll have XL and Dcel lanes off of that. You have Briarwood that's on the south side of FM eleven hundred that has a couple of street connections in addition to their portion. And then you have North Side Meadows, which is even further west, which is another hundred-and-fifty-odd home subdivision. So all of those interconnections are coming into FM eleven hundred. We're working with TechDOT to make sure that piece is covered on the Travis County side. We're very confident we have everything covered over on the Bastrop County side. We've done the schematics and layouts of that, environmental clearance and whatnot. But TechDOT is kind of wanting to close the book and make sure that they have everything accounted for on that west side before they really start. It is in their capital plan. It, it's been placed as a highest priority. But TechDOT's capital plan reaches through twenty forty. So I couldn't tell you which year they feel like funding would become available, but it is on that list for that particular section.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for me on any of the items?
Bring TechDOT down there at four o'clock.
Eight o'clock and four o'clock, right?
Then bring it by my house, right?
All right, we have the consent agenda next and you can, there's several things, many things on there. So I'm not going to read through every last one of them, but is there anything that we need to pull from that?
And many of these items are carryovers from the last council that was basically pushed. They were on the consent item, but I can definitely speak to any of those if you would like to have additional conversation.
So the amounts for the police station say, those are just final payments, correct?
For the most part, on one of them, we had, if you remember, we had two different contracts. And so the, the first contract was essentially all the foundation work and, and the structural there. That, that is up through their final payment. We are still withholding retainage to get a couple of items still addressed on the police station that we found in as we've kind of been moving over there. That is, gets us everything up to, with the exception of retainage on the police station being released officially to the contractor. But that, that does close out that first contract, which we feel good with releasing retainage and everything because essentially the foundation's in place and there are no punch list items related to that.
So do I figure right that we're within about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars?
We're plus or minus within that based on all the different funding sources we discussed to pay for bits and pieces. If you recall, some of Depot Avenue was coming from some additional funds and not necessarily coming from the PD, original CO. But it is becoming pretty close. You'll notice on, they actually, you know, some of the money when we talked to the contractor would come back to the city because it was a max def and I think it was around fifty K that they're looking at from that BP one going back towards the city that wasn't expended essentially. So it'll be close, but we'll be over that original amount that's been here. But we've brought forth those change orders as they've come out.
There's just a lot of pages with a lot of really big numbers.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure that we're down to smaller numbers.
We're, we're down to much smaller numbers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all fifteen consent agenda items.
I have a second. Okay, we'll begin with Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Fraser?
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kuznowski, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes?
All right. So for our new business, we start with the ordinance that we just went over. I won't reread that again.
No, number one is the general election.
Oh.
You need to read that.
I'm trying to skip that. No, no, I'm sorry. Okay, number one is the ordinance of the city of Elgin, Texas, calling a general election on May third, twenty twenty-five for the purpose of electing certain city officials designated election precincts and polling places, providing for early voting and election day voting, providing for performance of required administrative duties, making provisions for the conduct of such elections, certifying provision of required accessible voting systems at each polling place, and providing for other matters relating to such city election.
So very standard, we've done this each and every time. As far as the polling location, y'all have all been provided. Y'all have any questions on that or concerns? We've been jumping through hoops to get it all done for both counties. Been getting everything updated with the ward maps and the GIS over the last few weeks. Peyton's been running point on that back and forth, many times we've uploaded.
Yeah, can you provide an update about, because I see that the Elgin location is different?
Yeah.
Just some background, because that seemed to be something that could not be done, could not be done, could not be done, and now it seems to be done.
As far as location from to?
From, yeah.
You're going to have to remind me on the, you're talking about the rec center specifically?
Well, it's not, no longer at the rec center. I just want to bring everybody's attention that it's now at the North Bastrop County Community Annex.
Right, and so that was kind of one of those conversations back and forth with council and with staff is basically when we have the polling location there at the rec center, we're essentially shutting down other things that are occurring at the rec center. And what was ending up happening is you had, the polling people did a great job, but you have city staff that are having to basically overlap with voters who are coming in or if they're at the wrong location versus Bastrop or Travis County.
And coming around, I'm, I'm excited to see this. I just, I was very surprised because I was, it seemed like this was going to be an impossible thing to pull off, so I'm happy to see that.
So if that's what I'm thinking?
It's, I assume, I assume it's, is it the county building?
Oh, it's the county, the county has, has remodeled or in the process of remodeling.
So they, we've been working with the commissioner of glass on that specifically. They added a bunch of, just getting through all the permit and everything, but they've been able to expand their rooms by basically moving some of those walls.
Okay.
And so it's, it's a better place, I think, overall, just because of the line, you know, and getting people there, but they've been very amenable to that. So yes, I would say six months ago before they decided to do some restructuring within that building, it, it just wasn't going to necessarily work. But since they've been able to get that project permitted and move forward with it, it's more of a reality now.
Okay.
And he said he hoped by May it would be done, so, and that was last week when you made that announcement, so.
And what happens if this month?
I was going to ask that same question.
He'll be standing up.
Yes. He has said essentially what they are actually doing and looking at the building permits, that there should be no reason why they would not be done. All permits are passed, they are simply moving some demising walls that are not structurally loaded on the building. So you're talking about sheetrock and, and whatnot. So should not be an issue with them of having that room available for the public to be able to cast their vote.
Well, let's definitely make sure we're educating folks, because I can see a lot of people still going to the rec center and the rec center saying.
That was going to be my question, what's the plan to get the word out?
We can obviously post that on the city website and we can start posting that as soon as you guys want. I would expect, you know, from social media, those blasts will start going out.
Are we going to burn on the water bill?
We can talk on the water bill. The, the only question with that is some are still getting water bills from Aqua, so we'd have to make sure that they would be amenable to that. But we can definitely include a flyer within the water bills. Really from council is when is too early or when is too late that you want to start putting those notices out? That we can start running it, you know, bi-weekly or monthly at a minimum on the different, to let everybody know.
I mean, I would almost say, or two weeks before early voting?
Yeah, I'll say start in March.
And maybe even, maybe even some signs like on the rec center doors in, in addition to the social media and then all the newsletters.
And I am going to physical therapy down in Bastrop. And in one of the rooms, they've got a TV that has newspapers from Smithville, Bastrop and Elgin. Make sure that we get that on that as well, because it just cycles through. You have one that lives in?
Yeah, so just to clarify, with elections in May, we're talking maybe sometime in mid-March to start making sure we're circulating that out. And it may get a little bit more intensive as we get into the, before early voting. Just anytime that we have a place that the city can touch, the public is letting them know.
And then I would equip our rec center front desk staff with the current location and it written down, so.
Current location, it written down, maybe even just a quick little map of how you get from one place to the other across town. And again, this.
Because that's a hidden one, Jim, over there.
It is a little, it is a little bit hidden over there for sure.
And maybe where they put the signs out to, for the campaigns, put one big one right there where everybody's putting their sign. So you know, don't come here.
And. I'll reach out to the commissioner as well and see what we can do there.
We can check with locations and see if we can do table tents.
I think I saw that Travis County, we still haven't decided, correct?
Because what happened with that one?
We are still working on that one with Travis County as far as location, unless that's changed in the last week. So they're a little bit behind the curve. We, we know we have everything in with them. We are consistently following up with them, saying we, we need to select this place, but they have not been, they have not come back with that. So we're, it's still in their hands.
Is ACC bulking this a little bit or is it just kind?
Technically, ACC physically is located in Bastrop County. It, it's, it's right on the other side of the line when they built that particular campus. But yes, we've been following up with them pretty much every single week. They know it's a priority, but obviously trying to get that location set up. We did get all the GIS and ward data figured out earlier this week, actually, with them. Some little changes or tweaks to make sure their system was accurate, but those did go through. So as soon as that is, it'll be back to give you guys a briefing on that as soon as that location's been selected. But I would assume very similarly to that, notices will go out. We would probably reach out again to the ISD and stuff like that, because a lot of the people on, those are very public places that are available along County Line Road where that split essentially is. And you're talking Homestead Estates, Eagles Landing, the new residents in Briarwood.
County Line.
County Line, as that line cuts through there, so.
More questions or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All right, it moved in second and we will begin with Mayor Pro Tem, Fraser?
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kuznowski, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes?
Now we'll move on to number two. It's an ordinance for the official zoning map of the city of Elgin. This was the first public hearing that we had.
That's correct. Mayor, this was recommended by P and Z. You have a little bit of a unique situation. At this particular property has multiple zonings on a singular piece of property. And that is because when you have a piece of property that's zoned, commercial C two, but you're wanting to use an industrial environment, there's a percentage that you got to show is more commercial than industrial, so. And that comes into the land use essentially. You can't go and build a meatpacking factory and call it commercial, right? Unless you have the majority of the space is designated towards commercial. Or you can't call it industrial if the majority of the space is commercial. So this particular property harkens, they are looking to do an expansion of their industrial manufacturing and that new building would essentially fall on a piece of their property that is zoned for commercial. And so they went before P and Z, looking to change the zoning for where that new building would be and they expanded manufacturing to industrial. Because by land code, they would not actually be able to build that building and utilize it for what they wanted without changing the zoning. So this unique area, you're going from commercial to industrial. There's already industrial uses on that particular facility. They're simply expanding those industrial uses on that property. Assuming that the zoning is approved, they plan on combining, they have multiple tracts of property. They, they plan on combining all of those into one piece of property so that they have a better, cleaner version of setback lines and other things that apply to those buildings. But it's unique in the thing that you do have a one singular tract of property that has multiple types of zoning, which is allowed and, not done frequently, but it has been done in other places in the city. So recommendation by P and Z was for approval by council.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
This is the first hearing, right?
What?
Is this the first hearing?
No.
No, we already have public hearings.
I'll stop you.
Thank you. It's been moved in second and we'll begin, Kuznowski?
Kuznowski, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes. And then number three is on the second public hearing we had.
Yes, Mayor, council, um, again, this one, and before P and Z, we actually kinda have a reversal of what just went in front. We have an industrial zone piece of property that is looking to change the zoning to commercial. Uh, this particular tract of land is actually in the EDC overseeing, uh, Business Park of Elgin, uh, where we confer to Phase One, which is off of Dildie and Swinson. Um, it is a tract of land that has been there since vacant, since the Business Park was originally put in over twenty years ago. Uh, the property owner is looking to change the zoning in order to allow a commercial business there on the corner. Um, EDC had given, um, recommendation that they were good with it, being they are kind of the caretakers of the Business Park. Uh, P and Z also recommended approval of it, um, because the type of commercial that they're proposing in there still fits within the overall standpoint. You do have some commercial businesses in the industrial park, um, being the lumber and hardware store, and you have some non-commer, uh, industrial type uses with the county building, uh, also being there. They, they do have their rock and gravel there, but they do have the administration building. Um, again, this is, allows them the ability to build something that is along the majority of commercial versus industrial. Um, have they come in there, if they wanted something of the commercial, we simply couldn't allow them to build that on that piece of property without the zoning change.
Um, so with the hardware store, the county building, the food store, have tho, have those, um, zonings, have they, have they not changed?
For those zonings, uh, the previous director, you know, and looking into their, how he looked at the percentages to allow, he basically looked at the percentages and said, they fit within the percentage of industrial, but they still look like what you would consider a commercial property, and going through it. Um, we've taken a, a more stronger stance to basically say, we really wanna make sure that the land uses are with the zoning, so that we're not sitting there looking at a building trying to figure out, is it really fifty-nine percent or sixty percent? Um, for what they are proposing to put in this location, again, you're voting on the actual use, not a particular project in this case. There just isn't, is a very small lot, there's not a whole lot of industrial uses that you could put there that would be benefit when you figure in parking and everything else and manufacturing. It's, it's a very small piece of tract of land, mainly because it's been carved out of a larger piece, based on different property owners who have cut and parceled out over time. Um, we just think it'd be a lot cleaner to make sure that the zoning matches what that use is, a, and the owner of the property is looking for that flexibility, uh, for a project there.
Again, kinda, I guess where I'm going with this is that we've made exceptions to these other, I would say, non-industrial uses, but the zoning didn't have to change. But now we're saying, the zoning has to change.
Yes.
So then, I guess, my question is, um, I mean, let's say the food store decides to pack up, what happens with the new, with the new business moving into that property?
It would be along the lines of industrial, it would follow those lines of what that industrial lays out. So, a certain portion of that facility, if they were to utilize the exact same footprint, the exact same building, would have to fall under that industrial. Um, don't quote me on the percentages, I'm gonna say it's like sixty, forty, you know, you can't consider office space as an industrial use. Uh, so essentially, yes, those would still be there. Now, could they go through the same process to change if they came in with a, a much more commercial, and say it's sixty percent commercial, forty percent industrial? Then, yeah, it would come back before council to say, is this a good use of the land and P and Z for that, uh, specific property?
Um, what did P and Z say?
P and Z recommended.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the reason.
Okay.
Until the draft.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second, and we will begin with Mayor Pro Tem Brazier.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kasnovsky, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes?
All righty. The next one is discussion to take possible action regarding search process for city manager.
Believe all you guys have been sent, uh, information on different firms. Obviously, city staff cannot.
We haven't been sent that yet.
Well.
They should, we should be getting it.
You should be getting that from staff. Staff can't recommend a specific firm.
Right, 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 right.
So once that is provided, you would ultimately be looking for direction from council.
Is that in my email box? I'm looking at Isaac over there, like, I thought for sure. Okay, interim manager, come on up. He's gonna tell me it's in my mailbox. I know that's what he's gonna do.
Sorry, because of the movement and echoes and stuff, I couldn't quite hear the question.
Oh, okay, so we're talking about discussion on the interim, or a search for, for the regular city manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we're gonna get, have we already, have you already sent that to me, the names? There's like four, I think, we were talking about?
Ma'am, we, I was supposed to have sent you the names. I thought they were sent, but we have those. There are, uh, four firms, uh, that's in what we call Group A, uh, that we're suggesting that you get proposals from. We've reached out to them. Those firms are SGR, um, Appian, and Baker Tilly. And there's one that's C, CPS. So there, those four firms, we're looking at, we'll, we can get that information to you first thing in the morning, if not tonight, we can get that to you. We're just suggesting with that, that you, uh, see if you're comfortable with those four firms. In case you're not, there are a couple of other firms that we put in as a Group B, and as, uh, Mr. Perry said, we cannot recommend anyone to you, but we can give you those names. Those names came off of the, uh, Texas City Managers Association, uh, website. So those are firms that, uh, have been utilized in Texas. Um, a couple of them are located in Texas, some of them are not. But, uh, they're, the A group, three of those are very well-established firms, as far as I'm aware.
So the discussion, Mayor, would be, once those are provided to council, do you want us to put out a survey monkey for you guys to rank them? Or simply look for each of you guys to give an opinion, to say, we're good with your A group, and these are the ones we think you should submit, uh, proposals or go further with? What would y'all like that next step as presented to you?
And, and I apologize, I thought that that information that, uh, went to council, and I must not have been clear in.
Well, you may have sent it to me, because I know I did see some, but I didn't, I probably.
Okay.
I bet I dropped the ball.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure I did.
I don't think any of El, any of, any of us have seen it, though.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It probably stopped at me.
Oh, okay.
Once you do have the opportunity to, I'm trying to set up the process so it continues forward, so that when we come back here in the eighteenth.
So, I, I, what I would recommend that you do is, once you look at those names, uh, we'll distribute those. If you look, once you look at those names, if you'll send something back to myself, and I don't wanna violate any open meeting sort of thing, so if it'd be better to have them go to the mayor, I have no problems with that. But if there is a different firm, or you have questions about the firms that you see in the A group, if you'll let us know. Uh, because we're looking at, uh, using some executive search firms for some other processes, we've already reached out to some of them, and asked them to give us separate, uh, uh, not quite proposals, but separate, separate quotes for scope of services as well as pricing for that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I'll promise to make sure I read.
Sorry about that.
So we should table this until eighteen?
Well, it's not a matter of table, that's what we're gonna do next. We're just putting out our next steps, so we're real transparent, and everybody know what we're doing, so, we're not a.
I would expect that the same item will be on the next council agenda for direction, so.
And then typically, uh, you, you can, at that point, uh, uh, if we are, if they're responsive enough to give us some additional information, uh, you can, at the next meeting, you may be in a position to decide which one or two firms you want to have come in and actually make a presentation to you, should you desire that. Uh, some, sometimes councils want the representatives of that firm to come and make a presentation to them, and if you want to do that, we can certainly do that, uh.
That does make it more and fuzzy, because that's what happened last time, the last two came and gave a presentation.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we, send it to me, send your, uh, well, I still wanna do a survey monkey, I think. Think that's easier for y'all?
I mean, I, I think if they already have their Group A, that means that they feel that these are their top ones, we should be able to just take a look at it. If we're all comfortable with their Group A, then just send it back.
Okay, so let me know.
Mr. Turner.
Yes, sir.
What, uh, is the difference between the Group A and Group B right now? Is it, uh, mainly those that, that have presence in Texas?
Familiarity between myself and your HR director, quite candidly. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll get that out to you tomorrow, for sure, and then I'll give you to next Monday. I'm making your time short, mine was long. I'll give you to next Monday to tell me. That way we can get movement on this by next, the next council meeting. All righty, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the next one is discussion and possible directions to staff regarding the distribution.
Discuss those first.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, so since we have a few people here for the charter, uh, review, we're gonna move this one up right quick, and then we'll go back to, uh, talking about the distribution funds. Okay, I, the council was instructed to give, um, to talk to someone that they felt could be on the charter review, and to find out, make for sure that, uh, they, uh, wanted to serve, because it does, it's time-consuming, it will be some time. And so we have picked, um, each one of you all have a, a list. And we just need to make, I guess, one swell swoop.
Yeah, you can, I would assume you can make, if everybody's in agreement, obviously, everybody, it was discussed that you would all pick one person, uh, for it. If everybody's agreed with that list, you can make one resolution to appoint those and read off the names. Or you can go down each individually and vote on each individual person, uh, but that kind of defeats the purpose. I think you guys all agreed, you would have your own.
Right.
Your own vote, uh, so either way, but we do need to include as this, and then actually say what those names are, and then you guys take a vote based on that, so open to either way that you would prefer.
I think we need to honor the nature of each individual, making a nomination, and so vote on them as a group.
Okay. I, I agree.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, we'd like to make a motion to approve Noble Smith, Brian Lundgren, Debbie Warman, Dr. Jana Reader, Tiffany Miller, Anna Rao, Darren McGoney, Roger Adams, and Jessica Imes to serve on the Elgin Charter Review Committee.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved in second, and we'll begin with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Brazier.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kasnovsky, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes?
All righty, that's taken care of.
And Mayor, can we, for those that are here, can we give them some idea about what their process is gonna be, or what, what their expectation is for the next step?
We're gonna contact them, because we're gonna have to figure out when they can meet, all that kinda stuff, so, uh, and we have our attorney here.
We do, we do have a presentation, and so it would be helpful, they could kinda go through that mark, we'll kinda go over some of the next steps, uh, here, if they would like to know. If not, we'll reach out to them.
Okay. Debbie's here, and, and Debbie's here, yeah.
If you don't mind, we'll go to that presentation.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we are gonna move up as well, the charter review process update that Mark will provide, he has a, he has a slideshow, I believe, as well.
All right, good evening, council, Mayor. Uh, so what I could start with here, so as you're aware, uh, Mr. Zek had performed a, uh, charter review, a legal review of your, your charter. Uh, unfortunately, Mr. Zek couldn't be here, he said his firm has had a series of just really, uh, tough things going on, losses and things like that, so he apologized for not being able to be here, he had to go cover, uh, for another member of his firm at another council meeting. So, I'm gonna present kinda just what, what we've got here first on that charter review, and then we can jump into some kinda next steps. And then also, I think the next item on the agenda will be appoint a charter review committee. So, if you could, Peyton, can you pull that up for me? Do I need to?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Okay, all right, so, um, again, this is a, this is a review, a legal review of your charter, it's not a policy review, this is not better practices or anything like that. This is just things that potentially violate, or, you know, conflict with state law in your charter. So, uh, this was performed, uh, by Mr. Zek, uh, shows the importance of updating your charter to comply with legal standards. Uh, these recommendations for legal issues only. Now, keep in mind, if you have something that violates state law in your charter, conflicts with state law, you don't have to follow your charter. In fact, you shouldn't follow your charter, you should follow state law. State law will preempt your charter. So, this is just a cleanup, but don't think you're bound, that if you buy, if it says you have to violate state law, that you have to violate state law. That's not what we're doing here, so we just wanna point these things out. Um, so again, these are just things that would conflict. So, I'm just gonna run through these briefly, nothing earth-shattering here. Um, first one is, under Article Two of your charter, it says that you can involuntarily annex, uh, property outside of your city limits. Uh, that law was changed, um, five, ten, six years ago, cities that can no longer buy, involuntarily annex. So that's, that's not, uh, consistent with state law, and you could not involuntarily annex someone, so we would wanna remove that. Um, Article Three, the eligibility for filing for office. So, here, it doesn't, this is implied in other places in your charter, but it doesn't specifically say that you have to be residing in your ward for a certain period of time before you can be eligible as a candidate in that ward. So, we think it would be best practice just to clean that up and make it very clear, uh, in this eligibility, that you have to be in that, uh, living in that ward for that period, the required period of time. So that's another thing there. Uh, names on the ballot, so you, you've got in here, if there were two names that were very similar, similar surnames, that you would add an address. State law actually takes, addresses this situation, and says you would use a title or some other identifier, not your address. So we just wanna clean that up and take that part out to make it consistent with the Texas election code. Uh, canvassing election results, so you actually have under state law eleven days to do that, not five days. So, just to make sure you don't have to rush a meeting or do something like that, we would say make it consistent with state law, that you have that eleven days to canvass your elections. Uh, runoff elections, so this says within thirty days, this is actually set by the state when your runoff elections would occur. So we'd say just take that, that out, follow state law on runoff elections. Article Three, Section Eleven talks about, you could, all members, and council president can vote on, or should vote, shall vote on every resolution or ordinance, except where there's a conflict of interest, but it doesn't define what a conflict of interest is. So, that is defined under state law, as to what is a, a financial, you know, conflict of interest, and that. So, we would say, make this consistent, either if you have already, don't have an ordinance adopting that, and adopt an ordinance and make that consistent, so that you know what it, what a conflict of interest is actually defined as. Next thing is regarding your budget, this talks about, if you don't vote, the budget's adopted, that's it, consistent with state law, so we wanna make that consistent. Um, initiatives and referred petitions under Article Nine, Section Twelve, says that you have to call an election not less than thirty, but not more than ninety days. Well, we would say on the next uniform election day that it can be called. So you don't have to call any type of special election or anything like that, we wanted to say on the next uniform election day. All right, so that, that's basically it as far as conflict with state law, so pretty good, considering it hadn't been updated quite wide. I mean, uh, you know, that's a pretty short list, and nothing, like I said, nothing earth-shattering, nothing, um, that is a huge rush to get cleaned up. But, next time you do have a charter election, we recommend that you, you clean some of these things up on there. So, next steps would be that you would have a legal team, myself and Charlie would draft proposed charter amendments, uh, you would review them. Uh, you would review those, you would offer input. And then if you were, uh, they were acceptable, then you could put them to, out for an election and then it would go to the voters and then the voters would have to approve that. So, so those would be the next steps. And, uh, so any questions regarding the, the legal review? And then we can talk, I guess, about other items as well regarding charter. But anything first about the legal review?
So the, the things that are not consistent with state wa, state law still have to go to the voters to be approved?
They do, actually, yes.
Okay. And so I guess as a legal recommendation to, I guess, this is for discussion, but to move forward with these kind of cleanup ones and go ahead and put that on the ballot in May. I don't know if that's even, that's probably, I don't even know if that's possible.
You would probably preempt your ability to do a charter.
Yes, thank you. That's why, that's why I'm talking this through. Okay. So we would hold back and probably roll that with then the, the charter committee?
Yeah. So these would be kind of presented to the charter committee as well. And I would probably come back to them, I would think. Uh, either as part of their recommendations or separately from, from us, so.
Okay. So then our next steps would be to get all of our, uh, review committee together.
Right. So unless you're wanting to put these on the May ballot, which that's probably gonna require a special call meeting and, you know.
We need to have it all together.
We'll just put this aside for now. Let you, let the charter review committee get to work. And this will be kind of rolled into, to their recommendations.
We don't want a piecemeal because if we do, then it's two years down the road. So we need to just let them meet and get it all together. And what we do, we do. Okay.
I was gonna ask. You'll be provided that presentation, yes. Mark, can you, uh, clarify, now that they've adopted, who would be on the charter committee? Does council have to actually have a resolution or a formal charge to that committee to say, this is what we want you to look at? Or do it gen, generally? Or is that just a meeting that's set to the side for that charter committee's purpose? I know Charlie had talked about council can tell them, we want you to look at X, Y, and Z. Or they can say, go through the whole thing and bring back recommendations. Does that have to be like a formal resolution or charge that council needs to take at?
No, you don't need to do a formal resolution. I mean, you can just give them instructions. Uh, if it's just gonna be a general review, then that's, that's kind of the charge. We just want you to take a holistic look at it. Um, and if you have specific things you want them to look at. But it doesn't have to be in the form of a resolution. You know, and you can just make that, you know.
So I would still recommend to council that you need to pull your ideas apart. We've kind of talked, laid out different ways that you guys can, um, direct the committee. Uh, but I don't think council came away with any kind of thought process between all of y'all of what that direction is going to be. But that'll be one of the very first things for them to start is they're gonna look for you to kind of instruct them of what kind of review you want them to do, essentially.
And, and you're not in a big rush now since you, you got November. So if you want to take some time, appoint the committee, then do the charge. Or if you're ready to do the charge now, um, you know. Next step would probably be, once you get the committee appointed, then Mr. Zek and, and city staff will start reaching out to those folks and start looking at schedules and times for meetings and things like that. So you, you'll have some time.
Well, they're appointed, so we're ready.
Okay, you're appointed.
And I want them to look at the whole thing. Everything. If anybody has anything different, I'm just saying. If we're gonna do it, we need to do it.
No, yeah, I, I agree.
I think, I think, yeah, I agree. I think they need to look at the whole thing. I think it could be helpful to share just discussions that we've had that have come up about certain, certain items in there.
Oh, got you. Yeah. I'm sorry, I stepped out. I, I couldn't control this cough.
That's all right.
So I, I, I kind of probably missed some stuff. But I, I do agree that we, we should have one meeting as council with the, um, charter review committee. I mean, I know my person has, we have talked over the charter and have some suggestions. But if, talking it out. If that's cool to have one meeting with them just to go over, we're like, here's our suggestions. Or should we write them out and then they take them?
We could, if you, if you'd like, we could put this on the agenda for the next meeting. Everybody could come back. You've got some specific things you want them to look at. Then y'all could get that out there. Um, or if it's just general charge. And I, I think then that may take away the necessity for a joint meeting or something like that. You can attend all these meetings. I mean, you can certainly attend and provide feedback and things like that. But I think, once the committee starts to work, I think Mr. Zek likes them to just be able to kind of work, you know, independently.
He could add an agenda item, next, next council for you guys to kind of talk through that.
I want you to think through it. So we don't have to talk through it here. We don't be here all night.
I think it'd be nice if, if we do have ideas that we would like to deliver, considering that we send them to the mayor. Let her compile them and have them on a list that we can look at.
And go through, these are the things.
Ideas.
But you would like an item on the next agenda tour? When, once everything has gone through the mayor that you guys are all on the same page.
I think that's helpful too, because then we can provide even a slide deck of what those are. So then that committee has at least a starting place.
I agree. I agree.
Again, it doesn't preclude them from looking at other things, but.
Because we, we want the whole charter review. The whole charter review, so.
Any other questions?
Would, would it help to have, asking council this for Mark's purpose and, and to have, um, the attorney also back for that discussion? Just to make sure that it's laid out, I guess mainly for Charlie and his group, if there's some, does he need to be here to help facilitate that? Or is he pretty like, you, you send it to me and then I will go with the committee to help them through that process?
Um, I don't think he necessarily has to be here. I think the council wants to be careful. You don't get too far into the weeds on, and too much in pushing them in certain directions. More like, hey, these are areas that we'd like you to take a look at or don't, don't, you know, versus, hey, we think you ought to include this in the charter. I mean, that's, I think you may be better off with.
And I just want to set an expectation. So for them, they're not necessarily here for that conversation unless you guys really feel like you need them here. That you guys, between sending your ideas to the mayor and her, and then openly discussing them, you don't think that you need any preparatory from the attorney. So they can set their.
And Charlie will just, i- if you put, if you put out there a certain direction, if Charlie will present that to the, the charter review committee, pros, cons, both sides, you know, things like that. So they'll get a full picture of it. And, uh, and I think he'll, all he's gonna need from you is just some general categories, if there are some that you want to look at.
He does this for a living, so I guess he.
He's, he's done it a few times, too. But if he thinks he ought, I'll talk to him. If he thinks he ought to be here, then we'll talk and we can get in here.
Anything else? Thanks, Mark.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Our number five.
Okay, we're gonna roll back up to number five. Discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the distribution of community nonprofit, uh, support funding. And we have a handout. So we need to go through for short, how much?
We are, well.
Twenty-eight hundred.
Yeah, we generally, yes, we generally have to set aside as fifty thousand.
Okay.
Panel's up as well.
Good evening.
Good evening, dear. Okay, so. You wanna go one by one? I guess we have, kind of have to, to figure out what we're gonna do. We have an extra twenty-eight hundred.
Oh, wait a minute.
That, that's not that. We're on the wrong slide deck. We're on number five, which is the, uh, donation for nonprofits. We are, we're moving quick. Sorry about that, Pam.
Sorry, I'm trying to keep up the time.
Okay, next slide.
All right. Okay, there we go.
Generally set aside, council each years, the fifty K. Um, essentially, everybody's votes and amounts were put in. We've given you what that average funding, if you were simply to take straight across the average funding for each one based on the numbers provided. Um, it actually, we just think this is one of the first times it actually comes in that that average is under the amount that is set aside. So, um, council can go through each individual one and we can take those notes down for what that amount would be. But essentially, you have plus or minus twenty-eight hundred dollars that you could look to a different organization or increase above that average. Again, anything you guys would like to do at this point in time?
Miss, can I, can I?
Yes, you can.
So if I did.
I got a calculator. I didn't do it.
So, so what was left over and that was twenty-seven eighty-seven fifty. And then I'd add up that by two. So then that leaves thirteen ninety-three seventy-five. Because Alvin is still, so food four. Uh, my thought, and this is again, just a thought open for discussion, is to take thirteen ninety-three seventy-five and add it to, um, the community cupboard and Elgin Cares Organization. Those are the two big food sources.
And I would agree.
At fifty, and then we're good.
I would agree. Cause that's exactly what I was getting ready to say.
You had them numbers?
Nah, no. She, she had the numbers for me. I was gonna say split it.
Alrighty. I'm good with that, too.
I'm good with that. Okay, I, I am good with that. But I do have a question about the Oral History Project and the Mary Christian Burleson. They're all on the same line?
All on the same.
They're sharing the same pot?
No. One is twelve and one is thirteen and one is fourteen. Elgin Oral History Project is twelve and it, the average is one thousand seventy-five. MCB is thirteen, it's seven fifty. And then Elgin Historical is fifteen hundred.
Oh, and El, Development Foundation is?
Yeah, ran over that line. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make, to make a motion, um, to keep all numbers, um, presented and add thirteen ninety-three point seven five to line ten, Elgin Community Cupboard. And line nine, Elgin Cares Organization for the net of fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay. So it moved in second and we will begin with Mayor Pro Tim Brazier?
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kuznowski, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Calanne, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
All right, motion carries.
I will say, um, a year from now, I would like us to consider breaking down the categories. Because I think, you know, and I've, and I've seen this in my day job as well, that when you have one category and so you've got immediate needs like food, that's also competing for funds like the Arts Association. It's kind, it's, it's hard, right? You're usually gonna go to the emergency services. But I think there's a lot of other organizations listed here that because that's kind of been the mentality, um, that, uh, anyways, I just, I just think it's hard to choose like that. So I would, I would encourage us maybe to have even categories, different types of categories for these. So they could be maybe scored within their categories.
We had that discussion last year, too.
Cause it's hard.
Yeah.
I appreciate the committee doing that.
Yeah, I, I do apologize for our lateness. I'm gonna take the blame for everything that follows tonight. Okay, let's just do a blanket here. If it messed up, it was the mayor. Sorry. Okay, let's see.
Number eight.
Number eight now. I was switched around so much. Okay, directions, staff regarding the police pay scale. There, it's your turn.
Hey, again. The reason for the revision is because of the recent four percent COLA that was awarded. Um, commission staff are set on a pay scale that's approved by council where they have an annual increase based on service time. That increase is typically three percent. It, it makes it to where they continue that service, plus they recognize the COLA so that everybody is moving up and not backwards. So we just need an approval to move forward with the new amounts.
So just so you know, I think I'm the only one here left whenever we set this up in the first place, um, uh, on these scales. And it was mainly for recruiting. Um, and when we did it, at that time, it was never intended to be a part of, with COLA. It was totally separate. Um, and so if there was any confusion about, well, if they get this, then they shouldn't get this. And that's not the way that we voted, just so you know, the history of it all. Um, then it was, this was a recruiting mechanism and to keep, um, our officers here in town instead of them going off as soon as they got a little bit of experience. So I'm okay with this, uh, vision.
So, and to clarify, is it four percent on top of the four percent?
Each of these levels was increased by four percent.
Okay. I think where I'm confused is what you shared, that we already agreed.
So this kind of, if, and I don't want to overstep.
We're there, too.
Yeah, this was created essentially before you guys had the COLA, essentially as a way to recruit, to show people this is what it would be. Essentially, when council approved the budget with the COLA across all employees, is if it's not applied to this, it sets them back versus what everybody else's increase would be. So it is a set scale for recruiting to where they know where they fit in. And with, it basically just bumped all the rates up to four percent. But they still maintain what that raise would be based on their years of service or when they go up a different classification. And this is simply just resetting the pay scale based on that COLA being added to it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, we have a motion for Rodriguez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Swain. And we will begin with council member Rodriguez.
Here's Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes?
Brazier, yes.
McShan, love? McShan, love.
McShan, yes.
Kuznowski, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Calanne, yes.
Okay, and the next one is Bastrop County Advisory Board, uh, health appointment. And we only had one applicant. Roger Adams, right?
Yes, Roger Adams.
Roger Adams, yeah. And so that's who, we were already at our timelines, so I've already sent that in to Bastrop. So they would know who our person is. And since we only got one, and we only had one spot, so, um.
Still like council to formally ratify that.
Yes.
As that appointment. So with the resolution, a person's second to vote for him.
That's something.
Okay. All right. Begin with council member Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kuznowski, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Calanne, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Okay. All right, so it is, let me see, seven thirty-four, and we're going into executive session. Alright, so it is, let me see, seven thirty-four, and we're going into executive session.
It is eight thirteen and we are out of executive session and back into our regular meeting.
And I'll make a motion to direct the city manager to set up a meeting, or several meetings, regarding strategic planning with city staff and council.
I'll take it.
All right, so move to the second and we'll begin with council member Kaczynowski.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Callen, yes.
Ogrin, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes. Motion carries. Announcements? Where my lady go? Oh, there she is. Christine?
We have no lack of information.
Pray for the tree, you know.
Hello, y'all. I didn't realize announcements were last when I volunteered for this. Just a couple things.
I don't think your mic's on.
Hello? Okay, just a couple things going on that I want to let y'all know about. Cut Birth Family Dental is having their grand opening this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30 with the lighting of the neon sign at six. They have modeled it in the image of the old drugstore sign downtown. So everyone come out, the farmer's market will be happening that night. They're gonna have a lot of stuff going on. It should be great family fun, so y'all plan to come out. Next Thursday is SIP Shop and Stroll and the Chambers ribbon cutting and grand opening at their new location. Theirs will be 5:30 to 8:30 with the ribbon cutting at six. Official invitations will go out tomorrow. And then do not forget that we have music in the park every Friday in April and May, and that is coming soon as well. So we got a lot of stuff ramping up, so we hope to see y'all downtown. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make one quick announcement because I failed to put it where it needed to be. In case you didn't know, February is Black History Month, and I have a quick proclamation we're going to read. Whereas we begin a week of
Whereas we began a week of celebration, observance has been expanded to the whole month. It is a time that we recognize the invaluable role African Americans have played in every aspect of our nation's history and story. This year's theme is African Americans and Labor. And whereas during National Black History Month, the NAACP Elgin Branch Number 6174, the Elgin Juneteenth Organization, Elgin Pastors, Ministers, and the City of Elgin pause to recognize, celebrate, and remember the history and contributions of African Americans as well as the legacy of Black contribution contributors, scholars, and icons in the City of Elgin. And whereas the City of Elgin in honor of Cecily Quinn's centennial revealed the Black Icons mural recognizing Harvey Restbrook, Annie Lee Haywood, S.H. McShan, Dorothy McArthur, and Monty Joe Thomas. And whereas Betty Lofton was honored on February first at the Firewall, which was located on 201 Norris Main Street with the Hattitude Salutes Event in recognition of her unwavering contribution in her community and years served as a citywide volunteer. Now therefore, I, Teresa McShan, Mayor of Elgin, Texas, do hereby proclaim February two thousand twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, as National African American History Month in the City of Elgin. I call upon public officials and all citizens to observe this month by participating and supporting all festivities, celebrating the proud heritage of African Americans. In official recognition whereof, I here, hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Elgin on this fourth day of February twenty twenty-five.
Any other announcements?
So Project Celebration is the fifteenth for the outgoing seniors. It's out at the SP. I believe they still have some tickets. So if you catch a senior parent, they're posting all on Facebook and online if you want to do that. I know somebody has volunteered to make some cakes to auction off. There's that. Just, I know that they had, a message me said they had some tickets left, so if you don't have anything to do the day after Valentine's Day, it's a good, good thing to go to.
And then we have our Ward One and Ward Two Joint Community Meeting next Saturday, February fifteenth at ten AM right here in the chamber.
My announcement is this will be my last time on the dais and I'll turn it over to good hands with Mr. Turner, but I appreciate you guys letting me sit up there.
Oh, thank you, Bo.
Okay, that's a standing ovation.
Look, he had a little standing ovation. Hold on.
Well, somebody didn't make the cake, but that's okay with her.
We do have some refreshments in the, in the kitchen there.
If you do it next time, I told you, you would all not sit.
No. Okay, anyway, thank you, Bo, though. We appreciate everything that you've done. You've done above your duty and so we appreciate you. Could not do this without you and thank you so very much.
But you're not released of your other duties.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So it is eight nineteen and we are adjourned.